The City Council, City of Victorville. City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, I'm going to back up, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Authority, Authority Victorville Water District, Victorville Housing. At this point in time, since we're beginning the meeting, have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Pro Tem McEckern's absence is noted. Mayor Cox.
Here. At this time, we have individuals who wish to address the council on the agenda. There's no one in the audience. At the end of the regular session, when we come back from the executive session, there will be also the notice for anyone wanting to address the council at the end of our regular agenda will be invited to do so. At this point in time, first order business is a closed session. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have eight closed session items tonight. The first two items, A and B, which are for the Airport Authority and City Council, are related to existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. That is the SEC versus City of Victorville, and case number and titles are set forth on the agenda. The next three items, C, D, and E, are also existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. Those all deal with medical marijuana dispensaries, and the names of the dispensaries and the litigation is all set forth on the agenda. The last three items are anticipated litigation, one of which is possible initiation litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4, that's item G. F and H are anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D2. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock meeting.
Any questions of the attorney? If there are questions, we'll adjourn to the executive session at 5:03. so. I've got a couple of... Clarification of the clerk, there's no presentations or proclamations or anything tonight, are there?
None. No presentations tonight.
Okay. All right, this would be the regular session of the six o'clock meeting of the Victorville City Council. Madam Clerk, would you read the section on all the meetings that are meeting right now?
Yes, that would be the City Council, sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McEckern's absence is noted. Mayor Cox.
Here. We have, as normal, go into executive session at 5:00 PM. We have come from that executive session. Are there any announcements by Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had eight agendized closed session items. All of the items are fully set forth on the agenda. Five were for existing litigation, the parties to that litigation, and the case numbers are set forth. Staff actually requested that we pull item G, so we had no discussion on item G. Items F and H were anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D2, and there is no reportable action with respect to any of the items.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. At this time, we're going to have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be by Reverend Dr. David Denson, Jr., pastor of Burning Bush Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance by our Police Chief Sam Lachia. So if you'll rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh. So we have Mr. Denson, Reverend Denson is not here, but Mr. Kevin Mellon has volunteered. Invocation and then Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, Father, we'd just like you to bless this group of members of our city, Lord, that each and every one of them, Lord, will judge everything with fair guidance, Lord, and give everybody a fair understanding of what is asked. And we just ask you, Lord, that you'll just bless each and every City Council person, and our mayor, of course, and all our city officials, Lord, and their jobs, Lord. And we just pray over our city, Lord, that you'll just bring good blessings to the city, Lord, and that we can grow from here, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Kevin, thank you for volunteering to do that. Sam?
Ready to begin. Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America.
I ask initially regarding resolutions and proclamations, because we normally have those, I didn't have any in front of me, so, Madam City Clerk, would you present the agenda to the City Council, please?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council, and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, we are to the area for public hearings. We have no public hearings scheduled. The next item is an appeal hearing. There are no, I'm sorry, appeal here, we have no appeal here. Public hearings, we have agenda item number one. This is a Resolution 14-006, Exhibit of Project mitigated negative declaration mitigated and monitoring plan initial study for the Riverwalk. Are there any questions of Mr. McGlade? I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Public hearing is open. Do we have any cards on anyone wishing to speak on this item, Madam City Clerk?
No, we do not.
There are no cards, there's no anyone indicating going to speak on this item. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, just have a question. Is this project going to depend on the completion of the entire bridge project across, not only Oklahoma to Yates, but the bridge across the Riverwalk tracks to Green Tree?
Not exactly. The action tonight would just be to approve the environmental document, but the first construction segment that we're planning would connect to the Oklahoma Bridge. But the construction will follow, and it's going to be dependent on getting grant funding. So really, your action tonight is not related to what's going to happen in the construction phasing. It's simply approving the environmental document for the whole project.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? No further questions? Ready for a motion?
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern absent.
Brings us to the consent calendar. This is on the agenda as items C1 through C8. Are there any, one of those items that any council member wishes to pull from the consent for discussion? If there is, they can do that now. If not, then there's a motion that will approve all of these.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern absent.
Written communications, D1. This is Director Public Works Sean McGlade's item in regard to present a request to award a piggyback purchase, and I believe there should be, City Manager, just a short question on, explanation on what a piggyback purchase is, as opposed to the solicitation of open bidding.
Our ordinance typically requires that we do an open bid, invite bids and submit them, or, excuse me, receive them and then evaluate them. It does have an option that if a similar process has been done by another agency and the builder is willing to match that price, that we can forego our own repeat of that process. So we take advantage of that whenever we can, because it saves staff time and typically saves a decent amount of money as well. Staff will typically do some research into the price that was submitted to make sure that it's within line of what we would likely receive if we were to bid it ourselves, but essentially, we're taking advantage of someone else's similar bidding tactic.
If there's no further questions, do a motion, please.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern absent.
Next to item D2 would be a similar presentation request to approve award of the piggyback purchase of A, two Bobcat S650 skid steer loaders in the amount of $54,870.74, each total of $109,615.48, and B, one Tellmaster TC-12D trailer in the amount of $8,136 from the local Bobcat dealer. Questions of staff? If none?
Can someone explain to me what a skid steer loader is?
The skids are actually the tracks. It's a track device that is relatively small, similar to a forklift, but it has different attachments you can put on the front, depending on the work that you're going to be doing. So...
Not agendized.
Yeah.
I did talk to staff today in regard to these issues and the fact that especially this needed, what they're needed for, what the Water District needs them for, but if there are any questions to staff, now's the time to ask those questions of council members.
Yeah, this loader is actually, there's two of them. One of them is going to be used by the concrete crew to repair and place sidewalks, and then the other one is just typical Water District usage, whether they're trenching, small trenches with it and things like that.
Okay. You have a motion?
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern absent.
Item D3, we've had quite a bit of discussion in regard to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This is for property acquisitions. Unless there's, unless there are questions from the council members to the staff, this item speaks for itself. This is a request to purchase properties.
Can you explain the pending acquisitions, how those are different from completed and the...
He could probably give you a little bit more detail, but essentially, at the last council meeting, the council asked for sort of everything that's in the pipeline.
Right.
So we took a former item and sort of added everything that we have. This is the pipeline, as we know it right now. We understand that the council wants a workshop to potentially change the program, change the goals of the program, maybe moving away from the types of homes that have been purchased in the past, but we wanted to bring you one report that accomplishes as much as we can, but keeps the pipeline open for those projects that are in it.
I understand that, but we have five properties that were signed, I don't know what "signed on" means, but these go back to September, October, and November.
Correct, correct. So to answer the pending question, the pending would be characterized as having some type of contract, in this case, I know I saw Grayling today on my desk, and it's a signed purchase agreement and going through the escrow process, so it's actually in the process.
They're in escrow.
Yeah, or approaching escrow, correct.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern absent.
Then item D4, this is a request by St. Mary's Hospital to reduce the road portion of the development impact fee for the construction of the hospital. Before you is an explanation from Mr. Chris Borchek, who pointed out that in our development fee schedule ordinance, we do not list the hospital, as I understand it, at the correct time, because cities, it's rare that you have a new hospital being built. There are categories of, five categories that they have used, and because of the issue, the amount of money, and the difference in collecting it at the time the permits are taken and so on, I'm going to ask Doug Robertson, City Manager, Doug Robertson, if you would give an explanation on this, please.
Sure. The ordinance requires that this request be made within a certain timeframe. In this case, the developer didn't meet that timeframe. We did have, in the recent past, a change to the time that development impact fees are collected. It actually came out of a request, I think, from the Building Industry Association requesting that we wait to collect them upon certificate of occupancy. They asked for that on a temporary basis, actually, and when staff looked at it, we decided to actually propose it as a permanent basis, because if you step back for a moment and think about the purpose of development impact fees is to mitigate any impacts, and until you actually occupy the building, you don't have any vehicle trips being generated. So there's really no impact until after certificate of occupancy. So staff doesn't have a reason to necessarily be for or against this item, but I think this is something we probably should take a look at and maybe change the date to where it gives a little bit more time in an instance like this, since, you know, on paper, it looks like we would be losing out on a million dollars, but the argument is that it's a million dollars that's not necessary, because the impact simply isn't there. And they, you know, successfully shown that to staff, so the real question before the council tonight is, are you willing to hear this request even though they're not timely? If so, staff is, you know, making a recommendation that you approve it. In a brief discussion with our attorney, apparently, we misread the ordinance. The ordinance actually would require this to be a public hearing item, so staff would modify the recommendation tonight that if you so choose to hear this request, even though it's not timely, that you would direct staff to schedule the public hearing, which I believe would be able to be done at the next regularly scheduled meeting, in order to hear it in an appropriate manner and be free from potential challenge.
We're not making a decision on the request. We're only making a decision as to whether we're going to hear the request.
That's correct.
That's correct.
I agree that we should, if we agree to hear this, that it's a public hearing, we're talking about the difference of a million dollars. I think what in our fees anyway, we need as much as we can get. On the other hand, there's an argument about the way this is structured, so rather than go into the details, if the council does not want to agree to the hearing, there's no reason to discuss it. If we're going to discuss it, then we should agree to go ahead and have a public hearing. So, members of the council.
Well, my question is, is that if we agree to change it, what's that for all the people in the past that's paid it? Do we have to give them refunds?
Not at all. Essentially, as Mayor Cox indicated, there's five categories of development that's considered. Anyone who believes that they don't fall into one of those categories can request a different methodology. We require them to do the methodology, and then we take a look at it. In this case, essentially, the hospital was treated, I believe, as a commercial building, but it's not a commercial building. You don't have as many trips as you would for, say, a shopping center. You have a lot of trips, certainly, and the math would suggest that it's somewhere about half, based on the data that's in front of you. So, but there's really no reason to go back for any other developments. We did have an expansion of a hospital. As far as I know, they've already agreed to a fee structure that has been paid. They had the option, just as any developer has an option, to request at the time. In this case, there hasn't been an impact yet. For a building that has already created the impact, I don't know, certainly, they could make the request and be a council decision as to whether you choose to hear it, but I don't know why you would.
I don't, I don't think now's the time to discuss the merits of the request. It's a big enough issue, frankly, I want to hear it. It feels like a 10-day timeframe to make a request of this significance is, just feels a little arbitrary to me, and I don't have a problem reopening that to hear it. My goodness, I think that hospital deserves a fair hearing on every single issue from this City Council, in my opinion.
Yeah, there was, I can tell you that there was a discussion all along about them potentially doing this. You know, it didn't happen, per the code's timely manner, but it's not something that's particularly new to staff as far as that they were going to or were thinking about making this request.
There was nothing critical about that 10-day timeframe.
No, there is not. I don't, I don't know the exact purpose of it. As I said, you know, when we change the date that you have to pay that, that may be cause for us to take another look at that timeframe, because there hasn't been an impact. There has not been, well, there may be some construction vehicles, but they don't have hundreds or thousands of people coming to the hospital each day, because it's not there yet. So there really hasn't been an impact.
If there is the belief of the council that this should be a public hearing, and I also would believe if we're going to have the public hearing, we would want to schedule it when all five councilmen are here, that'll require a second, a motion and a second.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern absent.
City Council does not arbitrarily set the stage, set the public hearing, staff will do that. City Clerk, City Manager will make a determination when this will be set for a public hearing. It'll be advertised, it'll be agendized, and all parties that have an interest will be notified of those dates. The next item, agenda item number five, revised mid-year budget items with the omitting of the personnel items, has been submitted. I did, I only had one question on page 237 of 257, noting that the, a large number for the Airport Fund has requested an additional amount to complete the year, totaled up to, I believe, about three-quarters of a million dollars. I asked, well, what is the existing fund balance? And my concern is, if we have a fund balance that just barely covers that, is one concern, but if there's adequate funding, I'm not as concerned, and I believe someone was going to get me that figure.
We did research that figure, and the fund balance projected through the fiscal, including these numbers, is about $3.8 million.
How much?
$3.8.
$3.8 million, okay. Are there questions of the staff from council members? Then a motion would be in order.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern absent.
Several members of the council and the public are aware of our strategic planning sessions, and this matter has been placed on there as a message from our City Manager in regard to the strategic planning session summary.
Mr. Mayor, this item really summarizes and puts to paper all of the work that was accomplished. Remember, we had the large poster boards where the consultant took notes. Those don't fit in our filing cabinets nearly as well as a simple concise report such as this. So the list that you see there are exactly those challenges that were identified by the council and staff, as well as the goals that were set. At this point, what we will do is we'll share these goals with your planning commission so that they have an idea for the direction that we're heading as a city, and then most likely in April, we'll be back in front of the council with an action plan for each of the seven goals that you'd set. Staff will be meeting in a, actually, somewhat similar setting to come up with teams to ensure that we are striving towards those three-year goals that you set. So we're looking forward to bringing that back in about two months, three months.
Doug, are these available to the general public? The individuals can look at these to see what the council are looking at as far as our objectives and...
They absolutely are. They're in the agenda tonight, and we can certainly make a copy once it's finalized, approved by the council. We can make a copy for anyone who wants it.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment, for anyone who does take the time to read it, and I hope everybody does, I hope every citizen of Victorville reads this, I think it was a wonderful day we spent. But we've got a section on city strengths and city challenges. We used to call them problems, but we don't call them problems anymore, now we call them challenges. These are not in any particular priority. They aren't prioritized.
No, not at all.
They're just free-thinking, positives and negatives, and the numbering doesn't represent any degree of significance or priority.
That is correct.
We have discussed this as a group. We've had as much input as we can possibly receive. We want as much input as we can possibly can handle. We want everyone to have a voice in this. We are very sincere when we talk about our team, because that includes all the citizens of the city. We're very concerned about our future, how we look now, how we want to look, how we're going to reach our goals. We're going to get, for example, just a few months ago, we had a very serious discussion in regard to code enforcement, because we had reduced our personnel by a large number. We had a lot of homes, businesses that had been abandoned and vacant, and to some people, it seemed overnight, the city began to look extremely shoddy and unkept, and actually, that happened over about a three-and-a-half, four-year period. We are not going to clean it up, and overnight either, it's going to take a strong period of time, hopefully not three-and-a-half or four years. City Council, by unanimous vote, recognized that we want to change the image of the city, and therefore, we've authorized code enforcement to take steps so that the most worst kind of things that we have that are outright violations, and some just make us look bad. It's interesting that we are being supported very, very strongly by a good number of people who ought to see that, and then we're being opposed by the very people that received the notice from the code enforcement officer, which we would expect. That still doesn't mean that they are just turned loose to issue citations, everybody in the world, but we have calls continually with people in the neighborhood that says, enough's enough, you've got to do something about so-and-so. And of course, the first question that's asked when the code enforcement officer goes to that house or business, who turned me in? We never, ever require that the person give their name, because we don't just go knock on a door because somebody complained, it's verified first, and we don't want individuals who... It's verified first, and we don't want individuals who want to help us make the city better to be harassed. And so that is not public information. And I've said that over and over with individuals challenging me, saying they have the right to know. No, you do not. These are people who are violating the ordinance. We want to clean the city up, and we want your support in doing that, because we can't do it any other way. So this is only one item of a lot that have been discussed. We're going to finalize these. We're going to continue to have meetings, and we're not just imposing our will or our vision. We want the input from each and every one of, every person in this city who has a stake in this city. Thank you for that so far. Any other comments in regard to the strategic planning session or the summary? At this point in time, we have cards for public comments on items of interest to the public, and I would point out that I'm going to call on the individuals in the order that I received these cards. Come to the microphone, you have three minutes. But there was no motion on that, was there, really? Oh, there was. You want to prove it.
Yeah, just an approval so that it makes it official, and we'll post it to our website.
Okay, make it official so we can continue the next step. Sorry about that. We have a motion, we have a second.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
Thank you, Angela, for getting me back on track there. At this time, we have the individuals who may come up and address the items. You have three minutes, and in the order that I have received these, the first individual is Mr. Kevin Mellon.
I was invited down here by the code enforcement and the sheriff department. I have a street ministry going right now in here in the city of Victorville. I used to belong with Sun Cow companies. I know a lot of you probably know Sun Cow. We probably, West Creek Development was one of my projects. I've done all Day Creek and a lot of that. I was putting in all the underground and stuff. But since then, I've been disabled, and so I no longer can work, as far as what the doctors tell me. So I put my heart into, as far as doing good things within the city. Lot of it's volunteer. I've been talking to some of the homeless. I heard March 4th, we're going to put a new thing together, so that's a good day to really address it. But a lot of them are willing to actually earn that, the shelter and the food, by picking up papers. Where you guys are limited, we could clean the parks, we could clean the bathrooms, we can do a lot of things. I know everything's about liability these days, but somewhere, we've got to get past that, somewhere where somebody's going to just have to take the responsibility of it. I've seen tents, or I've actually seen car shelters over at Costco the other day, just happened to pop up at me. Those themselves are portable. They can be moved, just like a tent awning, but these are longer, and we can place those in strategic areas. I don't know if the city still owns George Air Force Base, and I don't know if there's an asbestos problem there or not, but again, we own it, the taxpayers actually own it, or whatever, and we might be able to actually put it out there. At the same time, we'd be able to figure out the criminal element that keeps coming in, and some of it is within our homeless situation. But there's some good, there's some good men out there that have lost jobs, have worked most of their life, and they're just out on the streets. And that's what I'm dealing with. I'm actually bringing them clothes. I'm sorry, but Goodwill, that guy makes $2.5 million a year, you know, taking in donations, but it never gets to the people in the streets. A lot of girls, a lot of people have always wanted to help and do these sort of things. Problem is, they're scared, and I can see why. There's some nutcases out there as far as that could scare you away. But by myself, I would like to either head up or get involved in this project here to clean up, basically, Victorville. Again, when I was in development, I thought of getting together with some developers in Seventh Street, right down there, Old Town. That would be the next Victoria Gardens, in a sense, with such nightlife, where people come out, they're on Historic Route 66. Why not get some revenue coming into the city? I know we have some bad things around it. I also have security clearance and a guard card and stuff with the city. So even if I had to provide the security, so we don't take everything away from our police forces.
10 seconds, Mr. Mellon.
Okay. Well, anyways, coming back March 4th, I'd like to, again, get on to the form there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, Barbara Powers.
Good evening, council and other members. I'm Barbara Powers with the Old Town Route 66 Historic Society. We were just, had our ribbon cutting as a nonprofit, and that doesn't mean we've got a lot of money, that just means we're a nonprofit. I want to draw attention to something you may not know. We're having meetings, monthly meetings, for the businesses in Old Town. There was a dozen people. There were 12 businesses that came and showed up, and their questions and what they need and what they kind of thing, just to be aware of that. That is a monthly meeting. It's not connected. I attend, but they do their own talking, and that's the way that's going. We have new businesses. We have a nutrition club on Seventh and B, Zumba. Desert Wind Thrift Gifted Hobbies on the south side of Seventh. Engineering is coming into two buildings on Seventh between B and C. Adelia's Legal Secretary, that's where these meetings are being held. She has notary and all kinds of things. She is here tonight, and very, very helpful that way. We are asking you to change the subject. You're talking about beautifying Old Town. We desperately need, at least we think we do, for Pride to have some input from the city council so that we know you're there, number one. And number two, we've asked for decorations that used to be, I've been, we've been up here since 1966. I know there's decorations out there for flags and Christmas decorations and that kind of thing. We feel we'd like to be, you to help us with that. People say they don't know where they are, so if you could have a fund or something that we could work that in to our Old Town and make it look good. Is that three minutes?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Just kind of as information for everyone, all individuals are invited to speak, but we cannot enter into the debate, because otherwise, we're discussing an item that's not agendized. And if it's not agendized, we cannot debate it, because we'll be entering into a discussion where if general public knew it was on the agenda, they would be here. So it's not agendized, they're not here. So while we do take your comments, we cannot respond. However, they are part of the minutes, and where individuals have made comments, they will be contacted by the city clerk if there's a clarification, further information, or contact from the city is warranted. The next speaker is Rafat Reed.
Part of it is cleaning of the land. My name is Rafat Reed Marcos. I am deputy inspector, and I was, I owned a piece of land since 2006. But recently, last year, at the end of last year, they created the problem of garbage and debris. And as it was cleaned a couple of times, but still, people dumping on it, debris and the garbage. Now, the city police department, I know there is here, there's facilities for correction facilities, those people could help in cleaning the lands. Also, the people who have fines and don't have money to pay, they could participate in cleaning of this land. And third thing, they have to put a fence at the entrance of compacted road which leads to people to drive the cars through the garbage in the second or third lots. My problem is including about 15 tenants, 15 owners of lands, which are not connected to each other. We could not develop this land in one time, and I understand from the planning, the city plans doesn't include establishing the main streets. There's no main streets over there. Then how this people will, I'm the second lot, I have to establish the street from two sides, one enter and one out. Then I have to establish two kinds of streets. How could I do that? I bought this land with a partners, one partner, he left this country. It was $400,000. Now the value of this land is 30 or 28,000 dollars. It means one tenth of the value. How could I spend every couple of weeks, $2,000 to clean it? I don't think it's fair for, and we are trying to keep our land until the city will pick up and we will make it happen. It will be very positive development for the city with my other owners of this land, about 16 owners for the land, between Hoof's and Essentia, Amethyst and the Cobble. It's the center of the city, it's very close to the city council. Okay, hopefully, I didn't speak so much and I didn't disturb you, but hopefully, you have a chance to read whatever I wrote with one of my partners, he's a real estate. And if you have a chance to cooperate with us, to help us, to solve, I am doing my best. I could send some people from the small contractor to collect whatever is a small pieces, but for debris, the contractor is responsible for that. Then you have to find a way to find one contractor, give him a fine, 10, $15,000, then he will not do it again. Thank you for your attention, and hopefully, I didn't speak that much, and I am very pleased to attend this meeting, because I hear very positive decision about different issues, which is part of the city agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. There's information that's been passed out, will be submitted to the code enforcement department. This is not a matter that's before the city council at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next card is Adelia's Legal Secret. Did I say that right? Affiliated with Gerson Calderon? Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'm here, I'm new to the Old Town Victorville, and I think Old Town Victorville is a beautiful city, and we need your help to maintain our businesses. We need a lot of help from you guys, talking about the meeting that went on. Apparently, we need some more patrol in the area. Like I said, I'm new, so if you can let us know how we can help you guys, so you can help us keep our business going. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. I do not have any other cards from individuals to speak at this point in time. The next item on the agenda, I'll get back to it, is for the city council, is a report. I don't have the agenda. Reports from the city manager.
Staff has no additional reports at this time.
Staff has no reports. Reports from councilmembers?
I have a report for Victor Valley Transit Authority. We just looked at our mid-year budget, and it looks good, under budget on pretty much every item. So we're doing well and tracking well with that. Does this include any, is this, this is for everything? So if I have something I want to agendize or talk about?
Yes, go ahead, sure.
I just also wanted to mention that a recent trip to Walmart was very concerning to me at the, how filthy it was, the parking lot inside the store, and I'm shocked, because it just opened. And the whole purpose of them moving out of the other building was because, you know, it was so dirty and they couldn't keep up, and it was overshopped. And I'm really concerned, I mean, is our code enforcement doing anything about this? And I'm noticing that State of Brothers on Amethyst, too. I tried, you know, go shop there, and it was even dirtier. So I'm wondering, is the city requiring them to maintain their parking lots? And what can we do to get them to clean the place up? I mean, oh, and then one other thing. We have an internet cafe, and I took a ride along with the police department, and when we went in there, it was under armed guard. And I thought, well, why would it be under armed guard? Well, the deputy that I was with was explaining that there's a lot of criminal element that frequents that location, and he can always get a good bust out of there, so let's go in there and see what's going on. So we went in there, and we found, you know, drug users in there, there was prostitution going on, things like that were happening. And then there was, it had signs everywhere that said that this is not a gambling establishment, but I sat there and watched them gamble. You could see it, because they have big screens, and they were gambling online. So I'm wondering, why does the city allow them to continue to do business? So those are some issues that I have.
I think those are, I have some of the questions on the internet cafe. I've never been there, but I've heard about some of the activities. I'm sure Sam will be addressing the council, not tonight, but at a later time on that issue. In regard to the filthy, we're getting more and more comments in regard to trash on the roads and in parking lots and up against fences. And in fact, interestingly enough, because of some calls I received this weekend, there was concerns because of the blowing trash and debris that have gone up against wooden fences, that if somebody puts a match to it, we not only would have a major fire, but probably involve some houses. And so if you know where those places are, call Switchboard City Hall, call me. We're going to see if we can get the appropriate department to start cleaning those up. In regard to the ongoing businesses that are open, good point. This is what we keep talking about, this is what we keep hearing from our citizens. They want to change the image of the city for the better. Do that, is to clean up those places so that you're proud to go to a business and not have to wade through the trash to get through the front door. I'm not saying it's that bad, but we hate that image when that allows to happen. We don't like anyone to allow that to happen, and so thank you for bringing that to attention.
Well, you were talking about the old Walmart that's clo-
No, the new one.
The new one.
The new one, and there's trash all over Panera Bread, and it was blowing garbage all in the Hawthorne Suites, that nice hotel that's right next to it. And I'm thinking, I'm embarrassed to be on city council and to see that. And Walmart wants to open up three supercenters in Victorville, and they can't even keep the one clean? I mean, we need to really get on top of them, and I mean, it's not fair for the other businesses.
Mr. Kennedy, any reports?
Yeah, as you know, I'm the Victorville representative to BBWRA, Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, basically the sewer service for the entire valley. It's a joint powers authority. We're on that, in that JPA with Apple Valley, the county of San Bernardino, Hesperia, and of course, Victorville. On the agenda coming up on Thursday, a topic that's been knocking around with that JPA for several years, the construction of two subregional plants, one in Apple Valley, one in Hesperia, is on the agenda for the, basically, the initial stages of the approval process. We have a resolution to adopt a financial plan for the construction of those two plants. There'll be a reading of the first, a first reading of the ordinance to increase sewer charges to the customers, and understand that BBWRA has basically four customers, the four cities I just mentioned. Each of their four customers bills the individual citizens and homeowners users in the city for sewer service. So our rates that we charge customers are not directly tied, but they're substantially tied to the rates that'll be charged by BBWRA to us. So that rate increase is coming. We've talked about it, I've talked about it for the last year. We'll have the first reading. They will schedule the second reading of that ordinance. We're going to authorize the general manager to enter into, to finalize the details of a loan from the state revolving fund to help build those plants. Actually, it'll be the primary source of revenue to build those plants. And they will authorize the general manager to go out to bid on the construction of those plants. Lots going to happen Thursday. I'm not suggesting everybody wants to come to the meeting. This is important for Victorville, because Victorville is the single largest customer for BBWRA. We probably pay about, almost 70% of the revenues to BBWRA from our users. So whatever BBWRA does, Victorville citizens pay about 70% of it. So it's an important issue. We're going to see some benefits of these two subregionals. Much of it will go to existing users, some will be for future development. Important to be aware of this. Can't really give you an idea yet what the rate increases are going to be, but- Can't really give you an idea yet what the rate increases are going to be, but it's anticipated that the increase to the customer known as Victorville will be about 9%. So, how we will work out passing that along to users, we don't know yet, but that's on the agenda, and you'll be seeing more of this as we move down this process.
Thank you, Councilman Kennedy. And Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, I do have something, it's on a different note. I had the most interesting trip to SCLA with Mr. Metzler. I got to go inside the Boeing 787-900 Dreamliner. This is the flight test aircraft, of the model that Boeing is hoping to deliver to its customers by the end of the year. It is one of the most popular Boeing aircraft being purchased by airlines around the world. I also got to see the Boeing 777-900 ER being prepared for delivery to Air Canada. This is the airplane that once complete will be delivered directly to Montreal to pick up Air Canada passengers. There is so much work and activity going on at SCLA. Mr. Metzler is doing a great job in overseeing and negotiating contracts, and I understand that anyone that's interested in taking a tour of SCLA can contact Mr. Metzler, and he will give you a tour so that, a personal tour, so that you can actually see all the activity that's going on. And again, thank you, Mr. Metzler.
Any other comments from councilmembers? That concludes our meeting tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out tonight, participating in this, and we look forward to seeing you at the next council meeting. Thank you.